Committee on Ordinance and Legislation, come to order. The clerk can call the roll.
Counselor Cadiz?
Yeah.
Counselor Hart?
Yeah.
Counselor Repose?
Here.
Counselor Sampson?
Here.
Vice President for...
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person can make an audio or video recording of a public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any media. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. The first item on the agenda is our citizen input. We have one person, Kelly Buchanan. Hi, Kelly.
Hi. Hey, guys. So, I'm so grateful that we have an audience that we put together. However, I noticed I read it myself in the draft, that there's two things that are questionable. C on the paper, I don't, unfortunately, I don't have a copy of it, where it gives, unless specified authorization to, by the mayor, or the state, or federal, is there a way we can have that reworded? So if that, does that, I'm taking it as if the mayor doesn't want to do anything with it, he doesn't have to, with that being in it. So it'd be number C. Unauthorized camping on public property. Do you want me to read it?
Unless it's authorized to do so by the mayor, is that the one?
Yes.
Okay, so it's unlawful to camp, to occupy a campsite, or leave a campsite material on public property, unless specified, authorized to do so by the park board, if it's in a park, by the mayor, if it's in a location, or any other city-owned property, or by the appropriate state and federal officials, if located on state and federal. I think if you're saying you're unauthorized, you're unauthorized. Nobody should be giving you permission. That's my feeling.
That's, and that's why the wording is kind of tricky.
Okay. I just wanted to read that for you. We'll talk about it after.
All right, perfect. Thank you. And the other question was, letter H, the penalties. So, again, I mean, being homeless, I'm, it's not a crime. Unfortunately, there's, you know, however, the activities that come along with it, and the things they're doing, they're violating laws and ordinances. So, if there's no consequence, there's going to be no change. And I, you know, some of my community has also read the draft, and they had the same question. Unfortunately, I'm the spokesperson for the community.
Well, we're fortunate you are. Thank you, Kelly.
So, I appreciate it. That's all I had. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to take something out of order?
Is that all that we have?
Yeah.
All right, well, let's do number two, motion to approve the minutes from July 23rd.
So, move.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to...
Take number six out of order.
Motion to take item six out of order, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Counsel.
I'm just going to let you know, I'm going to recuse myself from this conversation and vote with a recommendation from the ethical commission. So I'll be back shortly.
Okay, item six on the agenda. This has already been to counsel from this committee, and it came back because some of our colleagues had concern with the adult ticket and the child's ticket being five dollars and two dollars. And I don't know what the feeling of this committee is. And there was a comment made that perhaps we could give a discount to veterans, or to senior citizens. If we're going to talk about senior citizens, I fall in that category, so I may have to recuse myself, as Counselor Repose did, which to me is crazy, unless we say that I'm not a senior citizen. What's a senior citizen, seventy-five?
Forty.
Yeah, forty, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Hart. So I'll wait to hear what members of the committee have to say.
I'm going to have to recuse myself. We're talking about children. I am a child.
You have a child in school?
No, no, I am a child.
You are a child.
No. I guess, I think this was sent down, right, so for resident rates, I think that was another discussion that we initially had at the council meeting, seniors, vets, and then also children rates. So, from my standpoint, I don't think you need to recuse yourself. I think we all somehow, some way, have some type of impact on any of us, so it's... Right. So, I, I mean, just for a necessity of a quorum, you know, obviously, we have to vote on these things. So I don't necessarily think that there's a, truly a perceived conflict here, but, so I think if the administration, somebody from the administration, come down and just talk about, potentially, I know the intent is obviously to, with the fee schedule, is to generate enough revenue to maintain the trolley, but have we, based on the last discussion we had at the city council meeting, has any consideration been given to the resident rates, the senior citizen rates, and the veterans' rates?
Good afternoon. Seth Aiken, City Administrator.
Al.
Al Oliver, Director of City Operations.
So, on a normal Saturday or Sunday, not a special trip, the trolley costs about four hundred and thirty-six dollars out the door to run, which means gas and driver, all right? That doesn't include wear and tear, that doesn't include maintenance. So when we, the, the costs, or the prices, if I, if you will, not the cost, the cost is what it actually takes to run it, the price is what we intend to charge, were the subject of many different meetings, and a lot of conversation around how to do this as fairly as possible, while also maintaining the trolley. And that's really the issue. We have a trolley that we recently got rid of, that had gone to a pretty sad state of disrepair. And part of that is that the way in which it was structured first time around really wasn't sufficient to, to maintain, to wear and tear, to make sure that it was, it was always kept up and kept nice. Again, probably not as nice of a vehicle as we have moving around the city now. But at the end of the day, I know that it, you know, there's certainly a feel-good aspect to extending some of these benefits to certain segments of the population who, you know, it seems appropriate to do so. That said, it's been certainly considered, it's been discussed, and, and it was, we elected to put forth what we put forth, because the only way to ensure that the trolley is going to be nice, and operational, and clean, and well-running, and well-attended, and people would like to be on it, because it is maintained in good condition, is to charge what it actually costs to run. That's where the costs come from. The, the administration will do its very best to maintain the trolley. If this council deems it appropriate to, to do reductions for other members of the population, I don't know where you stop with that. But, you know, we'll certainly do our best to maintain a trolley schedule, given the cost of running it. But having considered it, it's going to be very difficult to do. We just, we want to, we have something beautiful, we want to maintain it beautifully. And I also don't believe you're a senior citizen, not for a second.
Thank you. I am. Do you yield?
Oh, I do, yeah.
The only thing that I would say is, I understand that, you know, the mayor does have the ability, if there is a special trolley event or tour, that it's maybe, you know, some type of big band music thing that they're driving around, that, that would be a special event for seniors at a reduced rate. Or perhaps, on Memorial Day, Veterans Day, that veterans would be able to ride the trolley for free. And I don't think that that needs to be in an ordinance. I think that's something that we can do. I mean, we have trash in an ordinance, but yet, around the holidays, we allow people to have more trash, or, you know, pick up the heavy item, and with all the boxes, or whatever they got, Christmas gifts. I think that it's, I think the ordinance is good the way it is. But I don't see on here, and I don't know if we had amended it, that if it was a school within Fall River using the trolley for a classroom of students, that that would be the hundred dollars, that that would be, oh, that's not on this one. But we had amended it.
I think it was, it was for cost.
Each half-hour rental, but it didn't say the school. Oh, for schools, okay. So we have that, and I think, I thought that was, I thought that was good, because to rent a bus is expensive, and I like the fact that if a school is renting it, that they're going somewhere in the city. So, at least the students are getting to see, maybe the battleship, maybe the children's museum, maybe Lizzie Borden, you know, maybe historical building. I mean, there's a lot of possibilities, so I thought that was good. I don't have an issue with it going forward, the way it was. Counselor Sampson?
If everyone has talked, I'd like to make a motion to pass through first reading as amended.
Make a motion to pass through first reading as amended?
I'll second it, but I'm the second. I have something to say.
Okay.
Just, I just wanted to make sure what Counselor Cadiz was saying about the maintaining of the bus. Seth, these prices were obviously built in that way. And to reduce it, we might be jeopardizing the main, the maintenance of, you know, not just the four hundred and thirty-six dollars off the, off the end of the streets, and the gas, but if something maybe might, major happens to it, we could...
That's the big thing. And, and wear and tear is such an intangible thing, you know, like, if you work for the state, they give you a certain number of cents a mile, where that's supposed to include...
And I don't want to minimize the wear and tear either, yeah.
But, you know, that's what we're trying to capture here, is we're not trying to make, you know, money on this thing. We're trying to make sure that we can keep it great, because it really is an exciting addition to the city. So, yeah, the, the costs that we came up with, the prices we came up with, were designed to try to meet what we thought the cost of this trolley, given its age, given the number of hours in the engine, given all those things, would be going forward.
Okay, that's it, I agree.
And the driver. You yield?
I do.
Counselor Cadiz?
So, just a question outside of the fees itself. Are we anticipating the fees going into the general fund? Are we going to establish a special revenue account, or...
So I think at this point, we've already established a special revenue account, because we couldn't charge fees, but there were some actual costs. So no one's been paid, no one's been charged, no one, nothing's happened. I think for trolley oki, there might have been some, you know, actual vendor payments, but, you know, there's been no revenue. And the idea, I believe, is to, is to put into a special revenue account for the maintenance.
Maintain that going forward, right to the special revenue, so we can capture it. So I guess the, it essentially comes down to, I guess, what, what your stance is in terms of whether or not we need to, to have a, at least a discounted rate. So I guess what I would have been looking for is, under the trolley operations, we've got the adult ticket at five dollars, the child ticket, age twelve or under, at two dollars. So, I would, I would have suggested that we eliminate that two dollars, and actually just replace the child with senior and veteran, so that seniors and veterans get a discount, and they only play, they pay two dollars. I don't know that we needed a resident discount, because I, I think at the end of the day, it's going to be mostly our residents that are going to be utilizing this. So now it's just, how are we making up for the cost? We've got to pay for it. So are we going to be budgeting in the operational budget, and obviously just providing that discount to the residents? And then, under the special trolley tour, or event tickets, you know, I think at that point, we could potentially talk about lowering the ticket amount for, for children under twelve, because it is twenty dollars, but adding a third subset for seniors and veterans, so that the, you know, the fee rate was thirty dollars for an adult, twenty dollars for children, and then ten dollars for seniors or veterans. So that's really the only compromise that I personally was looking for. I know some of my other colleagues want to see a little bit more in terms of that, but, you know, I, I think when we start talking about, you know, the seniors, and some of our veterans that do require some assistance with, you know, chapter 115 of federal benefits, I, you know, I, I think it's just potentially a good way to, to kind of minimize some of the, the costs there. Knowing full well that, obviously, we've got to absorb the cost and the, and the burden of, burden of paying for that, right, so the maintenance. So, not suggesting that we don't build up a budget, whether that's a transfer from the general fund into the special, or, or capturing a line item in, in the general fund to, to offset some of the monies that you may not have in that special revenue account. So that's, that's where I stand on that. I yield, sorry.
Counselor Sampson?
Can I amend my motion?
Done.
Say, can we pass through first reading with the amendments of adding the line of, I think that was fair, veterans and, and the senior citizen operation, to the trot, standard trolley fee, and the special events. So, eliminate the two dollars, children under two, right?
Under twelve?
Under twelve.
Yeah.
About three, but the two dollars go to senior citizens. Senior citizens, I think it's fair. And...
And what is the senior citizen rate going to be? What, what is the senior citizen going to be considered? Is it going to be fifty-five like Dunkin' Donuts, or sixty-five? Or sixty, or seventy?
My motion would be sixty-five. Sixty-five. And...
I suck at that vote.
If you go fifty-five, go long enough to say it's totally disrevered, because we're not charging you enough. So it's, you know, at least we have that.
Do you feel like it, and then adding, and I would like to add to the second one, for the special events, just add sixty-five and over, and veterans to the twenty dollars.
So, so what would adults be on your motion?
Adults stay the same.
Well, look at the special trolley.
Adults stay the same. I, I think that for special events, people will pay that, and I think for special events for a family, but I think that if, of senior citizens could, Counselor Dion had made some good points, that a senior citizen sixty-five, over, wants to do that, should have it reduced to that twenty dollars. Makes sense.
And children would be the twenty dollars, too? So, and adults would be thirty, seniors and veterans would be twenty, and children under twelve. And the standard trolley route, just to get that, it's still adults, five dollars, under twelve, two dollars? Or did you want to change that?
No, I think that under twelve, I'm going to allow the parole family, under twelve, could go for nothing. And your senior citizens can ride for, and your veterans, your senior citizens could ride for two dollars. Sixty-five and over, and veterans, with an I D, can ride for two dollars.
So, how many people fit on that, Mr. Aiken? Is it thirty-two?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
And then twenty-eight, if, if we'd have any ADA, both, there's two ADA capacity.
Would be twenty-eight. So, if it was twenty-eight, and there was senior citizens on there, and they were paying two dollars, sixteen, one, four, five, it'd be fifty-six dollars for a full ride. Now, fifty-six dollars for full ride, what do we, what do we pay in the driver?
So, wait a minute, I'm going to, the kids need to still pay the two dollars, because you'll just have a pocket of kids. I think we need to go down to senior citizens and veterans, but you'll just have a, a gang of kids that are going to ride for free, with no parents, no nothing like that. I don't think it's a good idea. So I think we still should keep the kids at two dollars. I think the senior citizens should go to two dollars, and I think that veterans can go for two dollars. I, but I, I think we should still charge the kids. That's my, you can shoot that down, but I think that what's going to end up happening is you'll have a gang of kids with no adult supervision on a trolley, and we won't be able to maintain it. So I think that we keep that, and just add the senior citizen line. That would be my motion, to senior citizen veteran line.
So, to answer your question, Counselor, the drivers paid forty-one dollars an hour. So after the first hour, we'd have fifteen dollars left to play with.
If I could just...
To get us some gas.
Again, this is part of the collective bargaining agreement. So, that, that is from, that forty dollars an hour is Monday through Friday, three to seven, and, and then Saturday, seven to, seven to three. So, and then if you go to Saturday, the second shift, it goes up to forty-seven, Sunday up to the fifty, so, yeah, I mean, no, people, we're pulling people out on a Sunday to drive, so, I mean, it could go as high as fifty-seven dollars, under the collective bargain.
So if the driver's fifty-seven?
Could be on a Sunday.
Okay, and if everybody's on there for two dollars, that thirty people, being there, you, you know...
But these are special events. On the normal, the normal Saturday, it's going to be...
How much?
Forty dollars.
The normal Saturday would be forty dollars? I mean, I think that people are more concerned with the special tours, that the special tours, if you, if there's not a senior or a veteran event, then it's going to be sixty dollars for the couple. And some people who are living on social security, sixty dollars a couple is a lot of money to go on a special event. And we don't even know, a special event, does that take an hour, or is a special event four hours? We haven't really determined that either.
I think it depends on the event, right?
Right.
Because the, the trolley oki was, you know, was a couple hours, a couple different stops, there was food, there were two different spots.
How much was that trolley sing-along, whatever?
I think it was twenty dollars.
Twenty dollars.
And how many hours were they out?
I believe it was from five to eight.
So, three hours for twenty dollars?
So I, I understand that, you know, the disrepair, but you could potentially have a trolley out all day, and only have two people that ride the trolley, right? So it's... We've had that. Right. So, we still have to pay... Absolutely. For repairs, the trolley's still driving, right? So to say that we're going to make amendments to the fee, that this thing's going to fall and be in disrepair is, is tongue-in-cheek, is tongue-in-cheek, right? Right. So the bottom line is, is that we still have to have a budget to maintain, no different than any of our fleet that we have. Correct. And that's all we're saying. So, from our standpoint, is, is do we give a discount to the veterans and the seniors, recognizing that we still, as a city, need to pay for that, right? We've got taxes, we got two and a half, we've got other fees that are going in there. So just being reasonable, and I'm not suggesting that these aren't unreasonable. I mean, we're talking about five dollars and two dollars, like, I recognize that. But when we start talking about seniors and, and some of the veterans, like, I, I think if, you know, some of them may forego the use of a trolley, because they can't afford it, right, because they're on fixed incomes. That's, that's the only thing I'm, I'm saying. I don't necessarily disagree. If we don't want to do children, I'm okay with that. But we, we, we need to recognize that there's got to be a budget in place for the trolley, right, because there could potentially be, you know, hours and hours where we're not collecting any revenue. And I, I think at that point, we have to reconsider whether or not it's cost-benefit analysis, it makes sense from internal aspects as to whether or not we want to run the trolley. But that's a different story, but we've, I know there's got to be a budget somewhere, right, and that's got to be in the general funds to, to capture it, so.
If I may, the, the, the hours and hours where nobody's riding, that's out of our control.
Mm-hmm.
But the fees are. Like, we, we have the ability to say, okay, you know, this is what we think, you know, given an expectation of an average number of riders, you know, during a certain time of year, I mean, because we looked at different times of year, when it's likely to go up during the holidays, and special events, and whatever. So, so there certainly is a plan here. Knowing that some of those things we can't control, I, I feel like it's folly to, to even, to now cut a significant portion out of what we can control, which I think is what we're doing. Especially when we don't even really know the numbers of seniors, and veterans, and children. It may be much more than we realize, and we're, we're cutting off our nose and spider face, which I think is, would be really unfortunate, because I, I really do think that, you know, given, you know, this trolley looks beautiful, but it's an older vehicle. If we're not, you know, doing everything we can to make sure that our budget looks at the worst-case scenario of something really needing to be done to repair the thing, then I think we're, you know, we're, we're basically asking for a, a repeat of what has happened before, which is that, you know, the, we couldn't keep the trolley on the road, and it was, it's something that I think people would miss.
Yeah. So I guess what I would say to that is, is that we have a three hundred and fifty-six million dollar budget, right? If we can't maintain the trolley, we've got a problem, right? So, and if we think, you know, reducing a, a price of a ticket from five dollars to three dollars, to give a benefit to, to seniors and veterans, we've got bigger problems financially, right? So, that's just my take. Folks pay taxes, you look at all the fees that we have, and I, and I, and I appreciate what you've, folks have bring before us. It's just a, it's a conversation about, can we offer a discount to those that potentially may need it, right? When you look at all the fees that we have, you know, licensing and all that stuff, and, and you put all the work associated with all the services that we provide, we never collect, you know, the true total cost of what it would be for, just say, a liquor license, you know, review, administrative fees, things of that nature. We never capture all the total cost, right? So we, we know going into this, we're not going to, we're not going to capture all that cost. That's got to be subsidized through the general fund, and, and that's where I'm coming from in terms of this. I, I don't think it's unreasonable to, to throw a senior or a veteran discount rate there. And, again, like I said, I'm not opposed to, you know, still charging children to go there. It was just one of those things that we were looking for. And across the board, we, we keep talking about increasing fees, increasing fees, and I know we've got to generate more additional revenue for, for the city, but I, I think we just kind of missed the senior and the veterans aspect on this, that's all. With that, I yield.
You yield. How about if, just like we did for the schools, that they can use the trolley for up to four hours for a hundred dollars, which would, you know, be peanuts, it would be a, a good thing for schools. If you did that for your senior centers, where if a senior center wanted to rent the trolley for senior citizens to do stuff, that they could have the same fee of a hundred dollars, in that way...
Just to be clear, I don't think that was, that was the deal. I don't think it was a hundred dollars for four hours, was it?
Yeah, up to four hours. Each hour after, no, I'm sorry.
That's the, that's the excess.
Yeah, it was two fifty.
Yeah, okay.
Two fifty for four hours, and four hundred for eight hours. But if you did that for seniors, too, or for veterans, that if the veterans wanted to use the trolley to, to go somewhere or do something within the city, that would be a way of helping them as well.
I think if, if the, the pivot was toward senior organizations and children's organizations, that is something you can actually predict, to some extent, right?
Yeah.
Like you said, senior centers, that sort of thing. Not knowing, you know, you figure every family of four or five, you know, two of those people are going to pay, you know, and three of the kids ride for free, those are three seats, right? So, so that's a little harder to, to manage, I think. It certainly cuts revenue a lot. I certainly understand that this is a sort of drop in the bucket compared to the larger budget. But it is kind of, it's representative of a larger idea, right, that, that things cost money, and the nice things cost money. And I think that's the whole reason why, why I'm even pushing back and all, against, you know, the, the, you know, the reduction for seniors and, seniors and children.
I think, I, I think we're all looking for some type of a balance, because we do understand that, you know, a lot of our veterans do receive, you know, chapter 115 monies, and we do have seniors that are having it tough, you know, with whatever they get for social security, which isn't much. So, you know, for some of them to look at how we can do that the same.
I think, and, and then I'll stop, like, because at this point, it's, it's up to the council, and then I'll just, I'll, I'll, we'll do it every, but if this were a bus, right, if this were a city bus, you know, and we were talking about free fares, which there are, right, there's Sunday service now, there's free fares, there, all these things. But this is a discretionary, more kind of entertainment-driven means of transportation than a necessary means of transportation. Not to say that if you don't make a lot of money, you shouldn't be entitled to entertainment. I'm not saying that. But what I'm saying is that I think the reason why we believe that the fees as proposed are fair, is that no one's driving, no one's riding this, because they have to, you know, get to a part-time job, or get to the grocery store, or whatever. They're more riding this for entertainment and, you know, the, the overall whimsy of the thing, which is quite wonderful.
Right.
So I, I, I would suggest maybe it should be looked at in a different view, and with that, I'm not going to, I'm not going to push anymore. I appreciate you guys letting me be heard, because you don't have to do that, and I'm grateful. Thank you.
Counselor Sampson?
So I will say that, I think, I think the rates are fair. I think this is a, a well-known, better ordinance. I, I do think I will back on the children. I think the children should pay. I do feel that it is a great thing. I watched the trolley run this weekend, and that the sixty-five and over community were having a lesser rate. I would feel comfortable with it, and, and you're, and you're veteran. And it's not that significant. I don't think it's going to make that much of a difference. I mean, you watch the, I watched the people that were riding the trolley. It was like, you know, people in their twenties, thirties, or forties. And maybe you will, at special events, get younger people. But I think this looks great as is, but I think adding that component, like Counselor Cadiz was saying, makes a lot of sense. And I think a lot of the counselors had expressed that in the last council meeting, and council meeting, we talked about this. So, I don't think it's going to make that much of a difference. I think it's going to make a tremendous difference to someone who's on a fixed income that's sixty-five and over, and their husband wants to do karaoke on the thing, and they're paying a forty dollars instead of sixty dollars to do that. But, and a lot of our veterans are older, so they fall into that senior citizen rate anyway. So, with that, I yield.
Counselor Cadiz?
The only thing, and I'm going to be like mistaken, last, last thing I'm saying, because I think we've, we've talked this thing to death, but, you know, the, the other piece to this is, is a, you know, an economic driver as well, right? So we've got these events, hopefully, folks are also stopping in restaurants and, and things like that. So we also do have meals tax that are coming back into, you know, the general fund. So I, I just want to say that there's also other revenue enhancements that could, can be had by these types of events as well. So, with that, I yield.
Just a real quick...
Counselor Hart?
Just a real quick, Counsel Sampson need the motion. Did it didn't get a second?
No, it didn't.
Oh, I did.
Oh, you did second it? Oh, I didn't think he had. I didn't think you had.
I'd like to discuss something. Yeah. All right, and is it still that two dollar?
What is it? What, what was the motion?
That I amended it, that I.
Yes, if you could read the motion.
Back the two dollars, okay.
In the first section, standard trolley route tickets for number two child ticket, strike out five, oh, sorry. We originally struck out the two dollars, but then we put it back in, so that stays at two dollars.
Okay.
We add section three for seniors, sixty-five and older, for a fee of two dollars. We add section four for veterans, a fee of two dollars. And then under special trolley tour or events, we insert, uh, number three for seniors, sixty-five and older and veterans, a total of twenty dollars.
Okay. That's the motion, are you?
No, I'm just.
You're giving it a second? Okay. So, Counsel Washington filed, I mean, Counsel Sampson filed that. Counsel Hot gave it a second, all in favor?
Aye.
So, we'll go for first reading. Thank you. I think he's getting counsel reposa. Yeah. Item number three on the agenda is traffic. And we have Stephanie MacArthur here. Ms. MacArthur, if you want to come down. We'll just give a second for Counsel Kadim. Okay, so item number three is, um, proposed ordinance for handicap parking, Eighteenth Street West, two hundred and thirty-eight feet south of Merchant, Albion Street West, eighty-five feet north of Donley Street, Baker Street East, twenty-four feet of Warren Street, Grant Street East, seventy-two feet north of William Street, and John Street, uh, East, a hundred and twenty-nine feet north of Morgan Street.
Motion for emergency preamble?
Second.
Emergency preamble.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to pass through all readings.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number four, proposed ordinance, uh, to insert in section seventy dash two forty-one, which section relates to stop sign following Detroit Street eastbound, intersection of Detroit and Omaha Street, Omaha Street southbound, intersection of Omaha Street and Detroit Street, Pond Street southbound, bound intersection of Pond Street and Anawan, Anawan Street. Um, and that is to insert, no. The section two is to insert into section seventy-three, seventy-two, which section relates to parking prohibited during certain hours. Uh, the following Cambridge Street South, eighteen feet east of Oxford, from Monday through Friday, seven AM to four PM. Those are the inserting, section three is to strike out handicap parking, section seventy dash three eighty-seven, Baker Street West, a hundred and fifty-two feet south of Warren, Bayview Street East, two hundred and thirty feet north of Last Street, Birch Street North, four forty-three feet west of King Street, Bright Street South, sixty-five feet west of, of Stafford Road, Flint Street West, a hundred and two feet south of Canaanica Street, Hope Street West, seventy-four feet east of Broadway, Osborne Street North, a hundred and fifty-six feet east of Arpen Street, Plymouth Avenue East, a hundred and thirty-four feet north of Dover Street.
Motion to pass through first reading.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number five on the agenda. Uh, Corporation Council and the Building Inspector and Representatives Community Development Agency to discuss the creation of an ordinance regarding to regulations of boarding in rooming houses. Just for the committee to know, we did reach out to, um, the Building Inspector, Mr. Hathaway. However, he was unable to be here this evening.
For the record, Alan Rumsey, Corporation Council.
Michael Deon, Director of Community Development.
Okay, I had filed this resolution because it appears that we have some people that are coming from out of town, buying a three-family house with maybe two bedrooms on each floor, double parlor, and the double parlor gets converted into extra bedrooms. So, then you have different agencies within the city placing people in these rooms. And, um, people don't know one another, they're not related to each other. They might come in with different issues, various issues. And two of the homes that this is, that the city was made aware of that this happened to, ended up requiring police to attend because of, um, arguments or whatever was going on. And I think one of them was a little bit stronger than an argument. But we need to do something with that. How do we, um, monitor who's purchasing homes and who's living in the homes? And, I mean, I know Milford has one resol, one ordinance that you, to be living in a house, it's gotta be a relative or something like that, not just like, which is kind of odd, because if you had somebody who was just coming to spend a couple of weeks with you, or somebody who had a kid who maybe was going to a local college and was gonna live with you, but you're not related to them, so, I don't know. I thought that was a little weird. But I think we need to do something with this, because Steppingstone, uh, is putting people into these rooms, Catholic Social Services, the, the shelter. And they're robbing each other from the rooms. One lady that I met said she was robbed, and that's why she left, and she's homeless again. Because she was fearful of being there. What, we don't have anything on our books relative to rooming houses, it's just the state law.
Yeah, and I, I've looked at a few things. I mean, we have a license AP for a public lodging house. But other organi, I mean, other municipalities have, have tried to address a little bit. It looks like it's mostly state law. I mean, okay, I think the two instances that you're referring to where there was violence, I, I don't think they were operating, uh, properly under state law. But I can, I haven't spoken with Glenn Hathaway yet, but I wanted to speak with him to see, you know, what he enforces, what he doesn't enforce, because, you know, I can, I can read about it in some case law here. But, you know, without, he, he's got the boots in the ground and trying to figure out what kind of problems he deals with on a regular basis. I know a lot of his issues are simply that he doesn't know it exists. So, you know, unfortunately, sometimes you find out it exists when there's, the police are called. And I think, you know, he hasn't suggested, he doesn't, does not have the tools to handle it once he finds out about it, so. Uh, but I can speak with him, uh, more in depth and try to figure out if there's something I can do, something I can craft that will help him, um, take care of the issue.
Is there a motion to table and give Attorney Rumsey some time?
Yep, motion to table.
A motion to table, is a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number seven, members of the Historical Commission. And you want to talk about this, uh, Attorney Rumsey?
Sure, I'll give everybody a, a brief overview. So, the way this came about is that a historic commission wanted to have, let me get the name right here. It was a, um, sorry, excuse me a second.
Certified local government?
That's it, certified local government. So, they made submissions to the state. And the state pointed out that our local ordinance is in conflict with the state statute. In essence, that the state statute requires that the, the members of the Historic Commission are appointed by the mayor. So, the questions that were presented to me, at least initially, was, well, are the city council appointments just nominations that have to be verified and ratified by the mayor? And the answer was no. I mean, it was, right now, it's, it's set up so that, I believe it's four for the mayor, three for the city council, and they said that's not good enough. So, the only reason, I mean, the, the suggestions being made is that we are inconsistent with state law, and they will not make it, they certify local government until we are consistent with state law.
And that opened up for, that opened up for more, um, higher degree from the state on what historic can do. So, how do we get consistent with state law? What do we need to do?
Well, I've already written it, um, just, I mean, basically, I'm not sure we even need, I mean, technically, we don't really need an ordinance if we have the state law. But, um, I just made it consistent with state law, and that's what is before you. I did look, put in there that the mayor's appointments would be, uh, subject to confirmation by city councils to not remove the city coun, council's role, but the appointment has to be from the mayor.
So, how many people are we short on?
Short, I don't know. I mean, I, I, I think there's at least some suggestion, I, I have not spoken with the mayor on this, that he would probably just appoint whatever members were city council members. And then, you know, the, the way it's set up is that every two years, two members, I guess, every year, at least two members would be due. Um, and then he would just, i- if there were any changes that need to be made, he would take it up the next possible time. So, I don't think there's any intent to make any changes to the composition.
Motion to pass through first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number eight. Camping in public property.
Okay, um, what's before you is my attempts to, uh, I wrote the ordinance for unauthorized camping. Candidly, you know, the, my hands are tied to some degree of what, what the state and federal law allows us to do. It's, I, I listened to the concerns that the, uh, the, the public concerns, and I know I've heard other concerns as well. Frankly, I'm not sure I can write it any stronger than it is. To address the, the two specific issues, one was on section C. You gotta remember, the camping, there's gonna be hopefully plenty of legal camping, which we, the park board would determine whether or not the camping is permitted on, on park property. Obviously, state and federal would determine whether or not it's permitted on state and federal property. But there were instances where the mayor would want to authorize, um, camping on city-owned property. I mean, just kind of spitballing here, but, you know, for example, if they decided to have, you know, a two-day concert on some, some state park, um, or some city-owned property, then the mayor could allow it then. If hypothetically, there's some kind of disaster where people are homeless and there's no place in the homeless shelters, I mean, it could be something where it's not what you would consider a, a typically homeless person. I mean, uh, there's many catastrophes where people who have shelter all of a sudden don't overnight, whether it's by fire, flood, or some other reason. So, I mean, I think having, the mayor having the ability to declare that camping is permitted is, is something that needs to be in there.
Discussion.
Yeah.
Paul, you got it?
Oh, I said, I thought you.
No, 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 I'm, I'm covering for.
Oh, right, right, right.
We can.
Any motion for a pro temp?
A second, it is now.
Well, can I nominate, um, Counsel Kadim for a pro temp?
Second motion. Aye. Aye. Discussion. Did you have?
I guess now, I'm, I guess, what I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking, Alan, you, you're making a point where, I, I didn't even think about that, um, so I can see that and see. I don't have a problem with any of the others, uh. I feel like they have a good question on one, but I don't right now, but I yield.
Counsel Sampson.
So, I actually agree with you. You've got that property down on Blossom Road, that beautiful nature site. If you wanted to do camping down there with kids, you should, you're gonna have to have that in there to be able to do that. I do am concerned with the penalties, like, not imposing a penalty. I'm, can you explain that, at least just give me some information of why there's no penalty? And is that what state law?
Sure, um, when you're dealing, th, this is, the camping law is gonna deal with your traditional campers as well as homeless, so. And the case law, which is, the Supreme Court has changed to some degree. But the case law basically suggested is that you can't criminalize being homeless. And, you know, I think it started in LA before it got to the other places. But the idea that if there's nowhere else to go, where are they going to go? You know, not, not committing any of the crimes, they're not littering, they're not, um, doing other things in public they shouldn't be doing, um, that you can't, i- i- it's inhumane to criminalize just existing, essentially. What the Supreme Court case recently said was that, um, it's not cruel and unusual punishment to have to enforce these laws, but it didn't address other things that are still out there. So, I think the premise is still out there, which is, you know, do we want to penalize somebody or fine them or charge them? If there's a place for them to go and they refuse, absolutely, I think most would agree. And, and a lot of the problems that we have is they refuse to go for whatever reason. Maybe it's the cohabitation rules, or, or rules against cohabitation, maybe it's against pets, maybe it's because there's sobriety rules wherever they want to go. But, you know, in the hypothetical where there's absolutely nowhere for them to go, they're willing, ready, and ready to pick up and pack up and move on, and there's no place for them to go, I mean, I thought that was probably the compromise, is maybe that's not one, we can have them move along, but maybe a, a monetary fine is not the smart, the smartest way to handle that issue.
I think some of the things you can do, I will tell you that I know Rosario's has had a big issue, um, and people are not wanting to walk on the Alfred Lima, um, walk anymore because of homeless people living there and coming out and harassing people. So, maybe something's gotta be here that you can't be, you know, near the bike path or in certain areas. And that if they don't want to go to a shelter, and we can find shelters for people, if they don't want to go, they need to move, you need to keep moving them. Because we, they go and they'll move something out, and then they're, they're moving right back in. Again, it's Counsel Hot.
Just one other thought, Al, Alan, you are, um, putting this together. Other towns or cities our size, or whether or not they're our size or not, have they been busy as well? Putting these together, have you talked to any of your colleagues in the?
No, but I, I've probably read close to ten other ordinances, and this is, this is not a cut-and-paste job from any specific town. It's, you know, I've cobbled together what I thought were some of the stronger provisions and deleted ones I thought are weaker. I mean, this truly is something I created. You know, I think Newton probably had a pretty strong influence. That one seemed to be, I, I thought, very well-written. Trying to think of the other ones that I looked at, but Newton's the one that comes to mind. But, you know, it's, it's, there's no perfect, there, there's no way to write an ordinance that solves the problem. It's just impossible. I think, you know, the best we can do is give, um, the administration the tools to maybe move them from one section, you know, assuming all the shelters are full, maybe move them from one section to a section that is, um, where the city feels they can provide better services. Other times, you know, it, maybe they're never allowed in the city property because there aren't places to go. And they're choosing to be there voluntarily.
Right, and have the other cities like Newton, have they implemented fines?
Yes, I believe so.
What could happen, like, what was the, do you, do you remember, or do you recall? I didn't look at that, but do you recall when, when you did research Newton a little bit, what they might have been?
Let me see if I brought Newton with me. I did not bring him with me.
It's just curious.
This, just so you know, the, the fine provision is in there. I didn't specify what it is. We have the ability to fine in this ordinance, it's just, uh, the, not impose if those three conditions are met. So, this does have a fine added. It's only if those three conditions are met that they would not fine them.
I yield.
We need a motion to reverse the.
Motion to reverse the pro temp.
Second. Motion was made, second, and all is in favor? Aye, opposed, so voted, motion carries.
Thank you. How do you get this fee from them if there's a fine? How are you gonna get the fine paid?
That's a great question. I mean, that's one of the reasons why some places choose not to fine. That's a great question, I mean, that's one of the reasons why some places choose not to find. Although, you know, maybe I shouldn't say this, but, you know, if there's no money in panhandling, there wouldn't be any panhandling.
Counsel Kadim.
So, um. I guess I, I understand where you're coming from, but I, I guess the, the argument that I would make is is that. Um we've had folks come before us, you know, we've, we've got uh the homeless encampments on the Quaker Sham Rail Trail, we've, we've got it. Down by the Kennedy uh Park Overlook area. Those, those individuals are there because we have nowhere to house them, right? So prior to the Supreme Court ruling, as long as we have somewhere to house them, they could be removed, right? So without any fines, what are we really doing with the ordinance if we don't have the fines? Now granted, i- if they're truly homeless, they probably don't have the ability to, to pay the fine, but I, I just hate to see us remove the ability. Or specifically say if they're homeless that they're not gonna get fined, because I, I think it just. It's, it's not gonna address the issues that we currently have in those, those areas. And, and, and it's not for everybody, I mean, I'm, I'm sure that we have some, you know, let's just call it twenty, thirty, forty, or even a hundred rooms that they can potentially go to. But if we've got two, three hundred folks there and we don't have enough rooms, we're just, we're essentially saying that we're gonna allow them to stay there.
It could potentially be amended, I mean, I'm taking what you're saying here, um, you know. In a situation where there's nowhere, no shelter to go to, I mean, I could understand if, maybe what you're suggesting is. They would have to move from a specific spot, they could still be fined, hey, you know, there are other places to go, you just can't go here.
Or, or I would, I would just say, cause I, I, I think department heads have the ability to waive fees, right? So maybe we just put in the language as opposed to um the imposition of a fine shall not be imposed if, one, the person is homeless, right? We, we scratch that and just say unless uh waived by, you know, the mayor or. I, I would leave it to the mayor, right? So the, the mayor would have the, the ability to take each case on a case-by-case basis. And say, okay, we, we're gonna fine, we're not gonna fine. I just, I just hate to have that automatically in the ordinance to.
Understand.
Cause you know what I'm saying?
Just a for you officer that could.
Right.
Use these as criteria um to waive the fine if there's an appeal. So I understand that point.
I yield.
Counsel Wash- um Sampson.
Uh, so I have a question, um, I agree with everything um Counsel Kadim said. But the not having a place to go, there, you know, may not be in Fall River, but.
Right.
There is plate, like Pine Street, you can get people to Pine Street in Boston, and from there, they bus them to the other encampment, so, you know. I don't know how that looks in here, but when that is, shelter is unavailable, that means there is a shelter unavailable in Massachusetts. Because, you know, people just don't wanna go to Boston Pine Street, and they don't wanna be camped other places, but that's not, you know, that's just. You can't stay living in a tent in the yard, and you're gonna get a lot of um pushback from people in these camps. Because they don't wanna go to those places, but they're more healthy and sanitary and humane than living in a tent with no running water. So I just, um, I, I don't want there to be this notion that there is no shelters available in the state of Massachusetts. There are no shelters maybe that people don't wanna go to, and I would like to see our own shelter here in Fall River increase their beds. Um but that being said, um there is, there's gotta be that no shelter available anywhere.
It makes sense, and I, I, trust me, I've struggled with um the, the concerns that everybody here is having, as well as the public. I mean, it, we all, I think we probably all have a lot of the same concerns, you know. My perspective is a little more legal as far as, you know, what I see over and over again, when communities do get sued and that becomes costly. Is, it's always, as I said, uh, the idea that you're criminalizing or fining somebody for just existing. Um and, you know, once, once there's a place to go and they choose not to, then that compassion's gone. So that was my attempt here, I mean, can it be reworked, that last part? I think so, um. You know, it just. There's no clear-cut rule that I can say, hey, this, this will prevent us from being sued and this one will not. I mean, I, I can't guarantee that, in fact, some, you know, there's already been lawsuits after the Supreme Court case that have, that have been filed.
But I, do you yield?
I yield.
I get it, that the ACLU comes down and they, you know, they're gonna argue with different things, I get that. But what bothers me is that, um, like uh Counsel Sampson was saying. There are other places that people can, can go to, other shelters available, they choose not to go. They just don't want to go. I mean, I had um a woman and her son, he was an adult, and. They found her a place in New Bedford, she said she'd rather stay in Fall River than go to New Bedford, which is nice, I'm glad. But there you had a home, an apartment, you, you know, you had a shelter and they could help you. Um, we as a community have spent a lot of money with teams of people going in and assisting. And I just think that we've gotta do more, you and I have talked about, you know, um people panhandling. And, you know, the ACLU said they have a right to do that, but why don't we have, you can only panhandle from this time to this time. Or on these specific streets, you cannot panhandle because there's too much traffic, or it's a safety hazard. We, we haven't done that, and I think this is falling in the same kinda thing. If you cannot be here, you don't wanna shelter, you need to pick up and move. And I read an article many years ago that Joe Good had written, and one individual who was homeless here in Fall River said. He loves Fall River because nobody bothers him, that he had been to Totten, he had been in New Bedford, and they're always coming, and they make us move, make us move, make us move. So he came in, nobody bothers him, and then, you know, our citizens can't, I mean, you have in here that they can't be on a bike path. Uh, letter D, but. Who's gonna, you know, we're gonna go there, we're gonna get people out of there every day, if that's what we need to do, that's what we need to do. There needs to be a whole team working on this to get people moving. Maybe if they have to move so much, they're gonna say, yes, get me to a treatment center, get me to a, a, you know, a shelter. Yes, I don't wanna live like this anymore, and it's unfortunate, because some people that have mental health issues, they can't live by themselves. And, you know, years ago, when they got rid of Paul Dever and got rid of um people at Totten State, some of the. You put all these people that had mental health issues that we don't like to talk about as a community, but you threw them back in the community. And expected them to survive on their own, and they can't do it, it's not fair to treat a human like that. I have very mixed emotions about this. Cause I know some people, yes, it's alcohol, it's drugs, it's, you know, people who have been priced out of their apartments. But there's very few that have been priced out of their apartments that are living homeless. The biggest part is either mental health, drug, or alcohol abuse, and you gotta get them to get the help, and they're only gonna get the help if they are rock bottom. But I, I just think we need to be stronger with some of what we're doing. With that, I yield, Counsel Repose.
Yeah, I, I just wanna, I, I think going back to the original conversation, when we're looking at, we had, we did not have a definition of what any of this is. So at this point, this ordinance starts with defining what is unlawful, which before was not defined. Either an ordinance or either by the Supreme Court case. I think my biggest takeaway from this is the idea that when we talked about getting areas that were encampments cleaned up. Our hands were tied to do any of that. This ordinance, and again through the Supreme Court case, allows the city and the agents to go in and clean these areas up. So now, if you're gonna essentially, people are thrown out of that area, the city now can go clean up that area that has been a disaster for. God only knows how long. So my perspective here is that this is a start, and I agree with what you're all saying, it's a start. Could we improve it later on? Most likely. But at this, at this stage of the game, we're gonna have something that's defined, we can start making some progress. And then, like any law or any rule, we're gonna have to look at it, is it effective enough, does it need to be strengthened? But I, I, I think we need to move forward and get something going, so we can start making some effective progress in cleaning up some of the areas. Like the citizen has come down many of times and discussed, so that's kinda my piece.
Instead, I just wanna remind you, I mean, wh- when you read the penalties, we're talking about the fine, but there's nothing to prevent. Um whoever's enforcing this to have them move, move along. And so failure to move would be a number of other things, you know, uh, so. You know, the fine is, so they can still be asked to move, so for example, let's just, in this type of, the bottom of Kennedy Park. If they're unauthorized camping, you know, they meet the, the elements here and they're told to move along, they still have to move. Uh, so there's some discretion on whether or not you wanna find them, and I would imagine that our police department, whoever's enforcing this. They're not trying to write fines first and foremost, they want them to move along, so, I mean, this. The, the fine, honestly, I, I, I hope that it is something that doesn't happen very often. It's, it's that stubborn person who isn't gonna move along no matter what you tell them to do.
So the, so to be clear, the fine is not gonna make the move. The moving is the first piece, the fine is the additional punishment.
Right.
If needed, so it's, it's, I think that's, you know, one, what I'm hearing is that we're concerned about the penalty in the terms of a fine. But we're gonna still, the ordinance doesn't allow for the city, its agents, whoever, to go into these areas. You have to move along, there is no, if and what's about it.
Correct, and to what you were saying, you know, if, i- if I take uh Counsel Kadim's ideas, you know, maybe I could rework it later. I'm not sure you wanna slow down getting this passed, because I, I think it's maybe a tweak, and maybe work with the police and see what, what they think helps them in their efforts. But the fact that they can be told to move along with this, um, if you wanted, you know, if you want this passed sooner rather than later, I think it's, we can work on it things in the future.
And ultimately, I think the question is, if person A refuses to leave, it's now a criminal act. In which the police can then enforce through their, through their powers. That yield.
Thank you. Counsel Kadim.
So I, I guess my recommendation would be just to strike um someone the third line. Right after Fall River where it says however the imposition, and just strike all that, so that the penalties just read any person found to be in violation. Of any provision of uh section forty-six uh nineteen shall be subject to the non-criminal procedure, right, cause it's non-criminal. Uh set forth in subsection two dash ten twenty-one through two dash ten twenty-five of the Code of the City of Fall River, period. And then, you know, at that, at that point, you know, the mayor still has the, the authority to really go, move forward, or we just put the language.
Yeah, it could be a policy decision.
Right. And I, I, I think this way, obviously, we would, we would hope that the administration uh uses common sense as they, they proceed. But we're also not highlighting saying that, you know, folks are not gonna be fined, they, they have the ability, cause you, you need, you need some type of mechanism to, to enforce it, so. Like, uh, so I'll, I'll make that motion that we strike however uh all the way through uh available. Second.
That's penalties in section H, strike from however to available.
Second the motion.
Second, all in favor? And did we touch on C?
So, can I just?
Go ahead.
So I, I, I don't disagree, I, I, I think um the way C is written. You know, you, you have, for example, Relay for Life, I know they were at Durfee at one point, and now at, at Bishop Connolly, they, they do sleep overnight. Um so I think if you don't have language in there specifically to allow them to do it, then they would be in violation of the, of the ordinance. I guess the, the question to you was, i- is this really trying to identify the, I guess, the three. Major groups that have authority over property in, in the city?
Correct.
So the park board, and then obviously, cause the question I had was the appropriate state and, or federal officials located on the state or federal property. So we, we don't typically have jurisdiction, but this, this would allow an officer to ask if they have permission? And if they don't, and if they don't have permission, then.
That was the hope.
Okay.
Okay.
We don't want somebody saying, well, this is state property, go away.
Okay. I yield.
Counsel Sampson, did you have something to add? Okay.
So I'll make the motion to pass through first reading as amended.
Is that second, all in favor?
Aye.
And number nine.
I know we, I know we passed through first, first reading, can we do an emergency?
Okay, you wanna?
Yeah, so I'd like to make a, a motion for emergency preamble.
Is there a second? Roll call.
Yes.
Counsel Hart.
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Sampson?
Yes.
Vice President for.
Yes.
Motion to pass through all readings at this point.
Yeah, so.
As amended.
Do you wanna withdraw your original, or do you wanna withdraw your original?
Yeah, I'll withdraw my original motion for first reading, and I'll make a motion to pass through all readings as amended.
Okay, so withdraw the motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
And pass through first reading?
As amended, second.
All in favor?
Uh, all readings have amended.
Correct.
Okay. Item number nine on the agenda, um correspondence regarding the creation of proposed ordinance relating to short-term rentals.
Okay, so.
Have anything on that?
Yeah, um, just so this council's aware, you know, we have a pending lawsuit right now with. What I refer to as the Jeribek House, uh, the stone house near uh Charlton Hospital. Their position essentially is, if there's no specific rule against a short-term rental, Airbnb-type thing, then it's allowable. And the city's position is, it's absolutely not allowable unless we do allow it. So, I mean, it's obviously not being used as a single-family home, it's not being used as a residence. Person who purchased it is purely for investment purposes, it's, it's a hundred percent um being used as a short-term rental. So I believe it is. Can't remember the exact date in September, but there's a, um, a hearing in September where this is gonna be for. Now, so the reason I'm telling you that is, what this ordinance is, this ordinance is designed to do is, right now, the city's position is, they are not. Legal in any way, this is what will allow it, so the idea is that with strict regulation, we can allow it. Um, you know, from, and this is just my perspective, you know, eh, there's backlash all across the world right now against short-term rentals. I mean, if you go to Lisbon, um, everybody there complains that nobody Portuguese actually lives in Lisbon anymore. If you go to Barcelona, uh, sometimes tourists are being squirted with squirt guns because uh the, they can't afford to live there anymore. Um, you know, I, I guess the one good side about Fall River not being the, the tourist destination of some of these other places, it hasn't ruined the city yet. But I think there is an idea that short-term rentals are ruining cities, and at the same time, I think most of us have stayed and wanted love it. We're using it without seeing the repercussions, I mean, it's hard to go to Portsmouth right now, everything along the water is an investment property. Yeah, it's happening all over, and I think it's, it's best for Fall River to get ahead of it before it wrecks what is our beautiful waterfront's going to be. Um, so that's the purpose of this, it's, it's obviously not completely finished, cause there's a couple blanks. Uh, you know, I spoke with Glenn, I wanted him to review it, and that we sit down, you know, this is my first attempt from here. This council's welcome to give me any ideas, viewpoints, there's a lot of things that could go either way. It's not so much like it has to be black or white, I mean, there's a lot of input from the city council, from the mayor, who, I wrote this without his input. Um, you know, Glenn wanted to have some input on it, um, so, you know, I don't know the best way to handle it, but, you know, my phone's. Always available, my email, if anybody wants to chat about what they think they want in here, what's not, but, I mean, the, the big things are. The idea is that somebody's supposed to live, if it's a short-term rental, they should be, it should be their primary residence for nine months out of the year. It does get difficult on how to prove that, um, but that's what this effort is, is to prove that um somebody actually lives there. And, you know, we're not trying to selectively en- enforce it only against the properties in the Highlands, it will be throughout the city. Uh, you know, from, as I wrote this, I'm hearing more and more about, there's more in the city that we're just not aware of, it's the same problem, so.
Do you wanna take some time to wait till you have the court decision?
Yeah, I think it's best, I mean, we could probably put it on the next agenda, and in the meantime, I'll take input from whoever wants to offer it. And we'll, we'll figure, and if there's no, you know, I know Glenn was talking about uh certain things that I, I, I know he'll probably have some changes. But I think maybe just put it on the next agenda, we should be good to go, I mean, this is pretty thorough, it just, it's, it's my ideas as opposed to this body's ideas. And once again, I've looked at numerous, just so you know, there, there's numerous ordinances I kinda cobbled together for this.
Counsel Hart.
Just a quick question, Alan, um, and I, I agree with you, I, I agree with this, this ordinance as well, but there's nothing really preventing that. Property owner to divide it into apartments, is there?
Yeah, for zoning, um, you know. If it's a single-family home, you can't just put apart, apartments on it.
But there's apartments in that neighborhood, that's my point.
Well.
You go, if you just go over to the next street, Hannover.
And I, I guess the idea is this, you know, what are we trying to do? Um, are they really operating a hotel without all the rules?
Apartment, is that person to divide that into an apartment, is that different from an Airbnb? Apartment, is that person to divide that into an apartment, is that different from an Airbnb?
Yes.
Okay, that's, yeah, so, I mean, if it, uh, I, I, I'm all in favor of this ordinance, but I'm just saying, there's nothing really preventing that person to go for five or six apartments in there.
Yeah, this is not designed to prevent somebody from purchasing a property and renting out all three apartments, if it, for example, is a triple-decker. That's not what this is trying to do.
I know, suggest he's gonna do that, I'm just curious if, 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 if that's been, if, if, I, I wouldn't want that to happen, but there's nothing preventing him from doing that.
No.
Right.
I mean, they're, not with this, and it, it's becoming a hot topic now, just whether it's short-term rentals, whether it's sober houses, whether it's rooming houses, which we've talked about earlier, I mean, what the city just needs to be vigilant upon is you know, you have a real estate per, investor who doesn't care about the neighborhood, and it's just about extracting the maximum value out of it. And, and Fall River particularly, with some of the older historic homes, you know, the way to extract value there is to put as many people in each room as possible. And they don't care about the zoning, they don't care about the neighborhood, they care about the bottom line, so, this is just another, you know, short terms. We talked about the lodging houses, sober houses, it's, it's a problem across the country, really.
No, and, and again, uh, having known the Feitelberg family for many years, and playing basketball in the backyard, and I can go into high school with them, and being in that house, I would hate to see it become what he's trying to do, so. Um, but I, I'm just, I just wanna make sure that, um, that we just, ordinance, uh, be, it's gonna be at the next, on the next agenda for the next meeting?
I, I could definitely put it on that.
Okay.
The next agenda.
Yep, aye.
And I was there with your readings, who's the anesthesiologist, so I'm older than you, that's, and you're right, the inside of that house is beautiful, and I hate to see it be destroyed.
Right.
But there are people in Fall River who have bed and breakfast, is that different than a short term?
There is, there's a license for that, and I don't know this for a fact, so I probably shouldn't say it, but my understanding is that was the intent for, uh, the Lizzie Borden house Maplecroft, that somehow failed, and I don't know how it didn't get the license, but the idea was to try to get that there. Um, I know people that looked at the, you know, Jerabek Feitelberg house who didn't buy it because it was just too much house. I mean, it's, it's not fair that somebody purchased it for an investment when other people avoided it, because they knew they couldn't run an Airbnb out of it, so.
Alright, so do you make a motion to table?
I didn't, but I will, motion to table.
The second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, we have a motion to.
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.